It's hitting my report, that's what I'm...
You all ready?
Okay, I'm going to unmute so we're back on the record. We're unmuted.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and Inspector. Next on the agenda will be...
Got some openings.
Be it openings?
Yes, sir, we have County Road 38 widening and resurfacing, this is the C E I services. I'll read it, the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is seeking civil engineering services related to the construction engineering and inspection for the widening and resurfacing improvements on County Road 38 from the Gulf County line, 30 mile road. The total length of the project is approximately 1.55 miles. Scope of the project includes widening the existing roadway from 22 feet to 24 feet wide and resurfacing existing travel lanes adding five feet wide paved shoulders, necessary drainage improvements, and upgrading signage and pavement markings. Consideration will be given to only those firms that are qualified pursuant to law that have been prequalified by FDOT to perform the indicated types of work. So there is no money here commissioners, I'm just going to call the name of the agency. You guys like to know where they're from and basically you'll make a motion to send it to a committee. This committee will be made up of myself, Lauren Liberta from over in the finance office, and your inspector Steve Patterson. That'll be the committee, okay? The first one is EXP, they're from Tallahassee, Florida.
EXP?
EXP, that's the outside, thank you sir. Actually... I got a trust, you have trust? Cutting around like that?
Yeah.
Well, verified and they're trying to keep you there as you always do. There it is. Alright, EXP, and it says here Tallahassee, Florida. This is second in line, we have SCE Southeastern Consulting Engineering. They're out of Weewalk in Florida. Here's their package.
I can't see one of them. We don't, they ain't got to sit in.
A lot of initials, this is DRMP and they're out of Tallahassee, Florida.
DRMP?
Mm-hmm. I like it, we got quite a few responses. Yep. It looks like it's the same group, isn't it? This is from Atkins, proposal, and let me see if, did they say where it's from on the outside?
Atkins.
Atkins, yes sir. Trying to see where their letter, they have a letterhead, oh Chipley, Florida, they're out of Chipley, Atkins. And this is from AECom Attorney Schuler said, out of Monticello, Florida, AECom.
A lot, a lot of people looking for work now.
Yes, sir, and that's all the ones we have for C 38. Okay, so this is not part of C 30. Oh no, sir, that's, that's the next one we're getting to, right? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, okay, so, I need a motion to send a base to the review committee.
Glad to the vote.
For recommendation.
Motion to send it to review committee?
Second?
Well, we, man, two of y'all. I got a motion by two.
I'll second. You done got to second too?
Yeah.
Well, take me out of it. I'll make it easy for you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mast, second by two, Commissioner Parrish, Commissioner Bolt, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passed unanimously.
Alright commissioners, now we're going to open one for County Road 67, same services, same review committee. That, that project goes from County Road 67, from State Road 30 to Crooked River Bridge. Total length of that project is 6.044 miles. The scope includes widening, resurfacing existing lanes, addition of a five foot paved shoulders, shoulder stabilization and culvert extension. In addition, signage and pavement markings will be upgraded or replaced, same considerations for FDOT, for being prequalified for FDOT. And this is EXP, out of Tallahassee.
EXP, tally, okay.
SCE Southeastern Consulting, out of Weewalk. This is DRMP, out of Tallahassee.
About the same one, Atkins, my baby.
It was Chip, Chip.
Chipley.
Atkins, out of Chipley, Florida. Okay, and AECom, Monticello, Florida.
Okay.
Thank you Attorney Schuler, so commissioners, I need the same type of motion, sending all these proposals to the review committee.
Glad to the vote. Glad to the vote.
So moved, second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, Senate floor committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passed unanimously.
Alright, and thank you all very much commissioners.
Okay, now we go back to, next on the agenda be Mr. Marcus Jones.
Oh no, so you're skipping, um...
We never got her.
You got a couple before her, you had page five.
Oh yeah, yeah, I'm on the wrong page. Trying to get through anything.
Page five, you're to, uh, Mr. Weems Memorial Hospital?
Weems Memorial, next on the agenda be Mr. Weems Memorial Hospital, the CEO David, Mr. David Walker, who quit.
You look up on the screen, there they are.
Good morning commissioners, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Alright, well, thank you all, good morning, I'm David Walker, CEO, interim CEO, I have to my right Courtney Alfred, I direct the nursing. To my left, I have Richard Lewis, director of EMS. We have two action items for you today, Frank, uh, new Franklin County EMS vehicle. We have made a significant investment in new equipment for EMS this year 2019. As our continuing investment, Weems governing board approved the purchase of a new EMS vehicle. The vehicle will aid the county efforts to respond, treat, transport individuals with need emergency medical treatment services. This vehicle will come equipped with an updated patient care equipment and no other purchases would be needed to outfit the vehicle when it is delivered. The purchase will be made from hospital care site funding, the cost of the vehicle is $272,000. Our board action is request the board to approve the purchase of the new EMS vehicle for $272,530.
So moved, second.
I got motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Bolt, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passed unanimously.
Say, is that vehicle a four-wheel drive by chance?
Uh, no sir, we weren't able to get the four-wheel drive version.
Okay, just curious.
The second item, we have new inpatient emergency department telemetry system. Weems governing board approved the purchase of a new inpatient ED telemetry system for the hospital. This system will allow remote patient monitoring and offer advanced technology for early detection of ambulatory patients changing condition. It will be used on every single patient that enters the doors of Weems. Every single ED patient will be connected to the passport eight to monitor their vitals during their ED state, which will be viewed at our ED in med search nursing stations. Then if a patient is admitted, they will wear the portable monitors when ordered, which will allow continuous monitoring of their vitals during their state. Our original code for the new telemetry system using Weems current purchasing contract was $177,76. Jim Coleman has agreed to allow Weems to use Alliance purchasing contract for the item that'll cost him $154,000. This is a $23,000 savings to the hospital. The purchase will be made from the hospital care site funding. We request the board approval to purchase the new telemetry system for $155,000, $154,000.
Okay, oh, can you, so moved.
Alright, got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bolt?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones, can you explain that thing again?
Yeah.
What kind of machine that is?
Yeah, it's, it's a telemetry system and it's allow for us to monitor patients, you know, their vitals, you know, signs, and Courtney, you can speak to more about it.
Yes, the system will remotely want to monitor all this, every patient that comes into the emergency department and is admitted on the floor. It will take their blood pressure, their oxygen saturation, their heart rate, all of these things, and show their, their heart rate and rhythm also. The system will include the monitors that every patient uses when they are in emergency rooms and then small portable monitors will be worn when patients are admitted. It will also come with large screens that are viewed at both the emergency room nurses station and the med search nurses station, allowing the nurses working to be able to remotely monitor every patient that is connected to that system. It will have 15 portable monitors, that's one for every inpatient bed in the hospital, and it will include four of the passport systems, which are the emergency room monitors. We currently have three that were purchased in 2015. This will allow us to have two more to meet our five beds in the emergency room, one that will be used in med search if a patient is on a, a need for that, the cardiac drip or something, and one also for our COVID room. So it'll be four new monitors for the emergency department, 15 monitors, one for each bed in the inpatient side, along with the screens and all the equipment that's, will be viewed by the nurses from both stations.
Okay, I just, thank you for doing that, I wanted you to do that for the participant looking, for people in the county to know what it will.
Yes, sir.
Alright, glad to the vote.
I just wanted to say, this is also a benefit of 23,000, almost $24,000 in savings because of our utilization of the potential Blue Management Services Company in managing our hospital.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passed unanimously.
The other thing I got, just for your information, we did have a impromptu visit from the Agency for Healthcare Administration. They came last Monday and one of the things that they, they found that our comprehensive emergency management plan was not approved by our local ELC. So we've been working with Pam to get this plan approved even before they came, we were still working with her. So there's certain issues in there that we have to address, but they were very complimentary of how the facility looked now compared to what they, what it looked like when they were here last year. But they also offered some great suggestions for us, so we, we're using it as a teachable moment, you know, from their visit. I just want to let you know that, and we also will be trying to update our, our, our inpatient rooms, ED rooms. We're doing some work in our clinic in Apalachicola, you know, we want to do some painting in there, you know, just to update our facilities inside. Just because we old, we don't have to look old, that's our philosophy here. But we also want to invest in our, in our patients as well as in our equipment and our employees. Thank you all for your support, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank y'all for what y'all do, we appreciate y'all.
Before they leave, commissioners, if I may, I have an item on my report, item number four, page seven. At your September 15 meeting, you discussed the Alliance Management Contract for Weems Memorial with Alliance CEO, Mr. Jim Coleman Jr. The board requested some changes to the draft agreement at that meeting. As reported by Attorney Schuler, Mr. Coleman agreed to the changes and incorporated those changes into the agreement. The final draft was sent to you by Attorney Schuler for your review. Is the board ready to proceed with this contract? And I, I will say to address some of the concerns raised from the public this morning, those concerns were actually forwarded to Mr. Coleman. I sent you a copy of his response, actually I sent you a copy of a couple of responses, one from him. He called me, he talked some more about it, he assures me that he's never been sued, but I don't want to get into that discussion too much right now. And also I sent you an email from Mr. Mark O'Brien himself, speaking about some of those items. So just for the boards and the public's knowledge, we did check on those items that were talked about. And I'll just, I'll just leave that at where it is right now commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just expand a little bit on that. In, this, this county commission is a gateway and an access for the public to be involved in county business. And we as county commissioners are open and receptive and welcome all input for county business of all kinds. And it is important, particularly in sensitive matters, that individuals who are presenting an issue that's of sensitive matter. I interpret some of these issues as being more like a tattletale than I do. A document or of an interest that is well documented, well evidence-based, something that we can measure. If we, if, if you're going to ask the county commission to respond to some controversial issue, I welcome the public to do that every time. But I also welcome the opportunity for you to present that information in well documented, well researchable, evidence-based, bibliographical, researchable material that we can then get our teeth into and go somewhere with. Other than that, these pepper balls that come through make me sad. And I, and I can tell you that the sophistication that we're dealing with here this morning relative to the management contract for this hospital has demonstrated that it's been very well vetted at many, many different levels, from Tallahassee Memorial Regional, right down through the history of the management company itself. So we welcome interest, but documented for us so we can press on. I would like to make a motion now with that comment that we approve the Alliance Management Agreement with Weems Memorial Hospital.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bolt. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish, any more discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schuler, in, within this contract, is there an out for the county?
Yes, sir.
What is those days?
90 days without cause and without cost.
Okay, one of the comments we heard this morning was, you know, you get into something, you can't get out of something. Well, we're entering into a contract, as you just heard Attorney speak, that if we don't like what's going on, 90 days we can be free of this contract.
We could escape.
So with that's why I made the second, and that's my comment.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Being consistent with definitely, and I'm one of five, this, the issues this board has raised and more specifically, Commissioner Parrish and I have both raised issues of sustainability for the hospital and making a go of it. I think that's why this is a step in the right direction. You know, it might not work, if it doesn't, we have 90 days to get out, and then we really got to seriously consider as a board where we go from there. But you can't, right now, this is the only proposal on the table for this board of county commissioners, so.
One more comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, the way I kind of look at this is if Mr. Coleman's group is managing 25, own some and then managing others, 20, a total of 25 hospitals. He's going to help Weems Memorial start collecting some of the money that they're billing for that we're not collecting, which will raise the revenues for Weems Memorial Hospital. And that's one of the big selling points for me, is getting some help on board that can help with coding. If something gets sent back because of the wrong code, I want it to be re-coded and resubmitted. Let's get this money back to Weems Memorial, not back to the county, back to Weems Memorial, and raise the revenues at Weems Memorial, so that we can address some of the other shortfalls that we currently have because we don't have the revenues and the sustainability to enact some of the good ideas that other people have, such as our CEO. He's got wonderful ideas, but when he comes to me with them, comes to me with them, I'm saying, how you going to sustain this? If you give somebody a raise, do you have the ability to sustain that raise? Without having to come back and go to the trust fund for more money to sustain something and policies that you've enacted as a CEO of Weems Memorial. And I think that's a big selling point for me, is just try to collect some of the money that we build for and put that money back into the revenue stream of Weems Memorial so that we can do some of the other things that we want to do, where there'll be a revenue stream to be able to do that.
Do? And my, my thing is this. This commission is not playing games. We doing, we do business. That's what we do, business. You know, just because people don't like the way the situation goes, but don't, don't try to hold up and say... Just don't lie on people. That's the way I see it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passed unanimously.
Thank you commissioners.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, so much.
Okay.
That was a big deal. That was huge. It was another turning point.
Right.
That recognizes the most valuable asset in this community is the health of our people, and that's what we just did.
And it got to be done, and we got that part of y'all to do it. Okay, next, next on the agenda be CDBG Administrator, Ms. Debbie Biff, she on the line?
Yep. Hey Debbie, there?
Yes, good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, but you got to move your little block off the camera, we can't see you though.
Alrighty. Okay, so I had one action item, but I actually need to insert one other small one also. The first item is the CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant Application for Hurricane Michael. DEO is doing a first round of applications in this category, and they will be due November 30th. I've listened to discussions you've had about projects that the county has, and I thought about saying, should we include any of these in the CDBG application? But I really don't think they fit very well, and this is going to be, I don't know how many months before they get this money awarded. The, I did talk with East Point Water and Sewer Authority to make sure they didn't have any items that needed to be taken care of. And while they did have some damages, things have either been already taken care of or will be with their insurance. So they did not have any requests. The cities can apply separately if they have any needs. So what I needed to know is, did you have any direction to give to me about whether or not we need to prepare an application for infrastructure directly related to Hurricane Michael damages?
Well, did we have any stormwater? Would that cover that?
Not that was damaged.
Stormwater would be eligible.
How about Algega Point Road? It was blowed out by Hurricane Michael.
Yeah, and, and with all the discussion, I sort of shied away from that one.
How about Els Court? County Park, it was damaged by Hurricane Michael.
And it has not been funded?
Yes, it's been funded by another.
Now, I do want to make clear, one thing, it's in my report, but I did not mention it just now, is that there is going to be a separate allocation of money for HMGP matching. So if it's an HMGP project, a FEMA HMGP project, and you have matching needs, that's covered under a different part of this grant program.
Is that through DEO?
Yes, it's just going to be the same grant, Hurricane Michael Disaster Recovery, but they are putting different things into different components of the program. So the HMGP match is a separate application process, and they, that is not in effect at this time. It will be, but they just haven't started it yet.
Well, the stormwater, you can do that on a regular thing, can't you?
On a regular, um...
CDBG?
You mean the Hurricane Michael Disaster Recovery?
No, like, if it don't fit that one, can't we put in like that for, on a regular project?
You like small city CDBG? Parks tend to not fund well, and also they have to be low to moderate income service areas. So this disaster recovery is for projects that don't have a real high load of moderate income beneficiary clientele, I guess you'd call it. It would be better to try under this, but again, it's Hurricane Michael, we have to define the service area. Where is this park?
Wait, what do you recommend?
Outside Carabelle. See that's where the park is, it's outside Carabelle, Ms. Debbie?
Yeah. Right around that curve.
It's where?
Outside of Carabelle.
Outside of Cur, outside of Carabelle, you know where the, of a old place.
Half a mile outside the Carabelle City Lemon sign to the east.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the name of the park?
Island View.
Oh, Island View, the one you've been talking about?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the one that you had the big discussion about this morning with Alan, is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, and you already have FEMA funds ready for that, right? I mean, I mean, you're trying to renegotiate, but that, but, yeah, I, I wondered whether this would, would not be a good fit because of the fact that you already have funds earmarked for it.
What about beach nourishment issues relative to economic impact?
Beach nourishment seem like a real can of worms as far as it fitting CDBG because you, you have to get your maintenance agreement. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know, you got a bunch of people here that don't really know what you talking about. Ain't no county staff here, you know what I'm saying, to, to match up all this stuff. Pam's been doing a lot of that, Alan's been doing a lot of that.
So the, the discussion you had this morning with Alan Pierce, you talked about beach renourishment and, and that kind of thing for Alligator Point. And there was, if, if I understood it correctly, you would have to do a design and then you'd have to figure out if you could get the property owners to enter some sort of continuing maintenance agreement for the beach. Is that what I understood, I mean, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Separate subjects.
Two different subjects, that's all. The one you talking about, getting the people to agree is that, that's on Alligator Park.
Right, that, that's what you're talking about, beach, so you're talking about beach renourishment for where?
That's Alligator Park, but it...
For the Island View Park?
No, the Island View Park is right out of Carabelle. That's right there where the old state, used to park their trucks when they were working, that yellow truck used to be there in the county on it now.
Yeah, I, I think I know where you're talking about, but I guess what I'm asking is, wasn't that the big discussion you had this morning? There were two things you talked about that I heard. You talked about Alligator Point and Island.
We had both, but all...
Yeah, the, the one beach nourishment area was the discussion to protect the newly rebuilt 1,200... twelve hundred feet of Alligator Drive. And that was, how do you protect that? And, um, that was the big discussion. Uh, let me shift that beach renourishment issue into dune restoration. Is there any potential application for that?
Uh, where would we be talking about?
Well, there's, uh, dune destruction along the beachlands of Alligator Point, um, particularly, I think, in beach access areas? And along the front of many, many homes that are there at Alligator Point?
Okay, are we talking about public access areas?
That's one area, yes.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Deborah, reading through some of the DEO, DEO stuff that's attached to this, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in one of the funds at least, they've already determined the area in the county that received funds to be the three-two-three-two-eight zip code.
That was their priority area.
Okay. Well, I know when we're talking with dunes and dune restoration, uh, St. George Island really could use some of that, and the county's always referred to Twelfth Street to Twelfth Street on the island, on the Gulf side is to be in public beach, and there was a lot of dunes gone before you get another Hurricane Michael, there's gonna be a lot of homes and businesses gone. So, if dune restoration's an option, I think that's a good place for it.
Okay, so, Alligator Point and St. George Island, dune restoration?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what about, it says it can be used for matching monies. What about your project there on the, the fishing pier?
Yeah, yeah, could probably do that, too.
And not have to use that other funding mechanism.
Yeah, yeah, probably could. Yeah, we're, uh, we're currently have a FEMA obligation, and there, it's being redesigned or designed, like, to include the mitigation dollars for FEMA on the East Point side of the fishing pier, but we also have to provide a match for that. Could we use these DEO dollars to help match that?
Is this, is this an HMGP, or you're talking about a different program now, FEMA?
I don't know which program it is. I know it's from Hurricane Michael.
Yeah. Michael, do you know, uh, this is, uh, the, an HMGP?
No, no, ma'am, I'll have to go and check and verify.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I think, it's my understanding that the state is going, has set aside already funds out of this overall grant program to pay all of the HMGP matching.
Okay.
So, you, you won't, that, so that's gonna be an entirely separate thing from what we're talking about now. They, what they're doing is they're, they're, um, chopping this huge allocation from HUD up, and like housing, for example, all the housing stuff that DEO's gonna handle in-house. So, they're doing, they're going to do a commercial, uh, economic round also. That'll be, that's not now, but that's coming up. So, right now, we've got an infrastructure component, the first round, we're gonna have an HMGP match component, we're going to have a, an economic component, and we're going to have a, um, a housing component. So, at this time, um, we can go for dune restoration. I don't know how competitive it's going to be, but we can give it a shot. Um, and another thought would be, if it doesn't make it under this, I don't know if we could talk about this being an economic issue for tourism and put it, maybe submit it again under that round.
No, you probably could. Uh, I'm sure that would be debatable depending on how it's worked.
These are gonna be due November thirtieth, so we will have to have one public hearing before the applications are submitted, so that'd be scheduled in November.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask another question. As included in this round, there was some of the stuff I was reading from DEO that it talks about the opportunity for, uh, commercial businesses that were destroyed to actually be bought out, I guess, with some of these funds?
Yeah, they haven't gotten a good details on that yet. That's gonna be that commercial and economic round.
Okay, well, I, I want to know those details before we get there, because there were several businesses that the business can't, that, they can't be rebuilt post Hurricane Michael. They received that much damage, and they're just sitting there as an eyesore, and if we have a way to buy those buildings out and tear them down, I think the, the public would be better served.
Okay.
Back to park, we need some more Ricky.
Oh, we, we got, we got that taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, the clerk, Deborah, the clerk came up with an excellent idea. So, our nineteen forties courthouse, we have a couple of big issues. It leaks really bad, um, that was show when it rained here recently, and, and I mean, leaks where the first, the top floor was flooded and second floor flooded, so that will need repairs. And I'm about to give the board more bad news, that they, there's stormwater infiltration into our sewer system that's flooding the city's landfill, and we have to pay one for pumpouts, and I'll, I'll get to that later, commissioners, but once the, once that level, uh, is, is reduced of, of the stormwater infiltration, then we have to go in there and get an engineer and then get a contractor to figure out where this infiltration is from stormwater, which pipe is broken in the sewer system, get that fixed, and that's not going to be a, a, a small penny, commissioners, I'll tell you that right now. So, I guess I'm leading up to the two items I just discussed that the clerk brought up. Can this program address any of the courthouse issues that we have?
The courthouse is considered a, um, function of general local government, which is not eligible. Uh, you, I would, I would suggest insurance if you think that there's any relationship...
Right to my heart, okay.
Uh, now, stormwater in the city sewer would be a city thing, the city of Applejack Cola can apply for that, separate from the county.
Well, let me ask you something.
They could, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
They don't know where that, could it be on that road, what they, on the side of the Cooda, coming?
The Leslie Street?
The one that got blocked out?
Yeah, Leslie Street, um, that's, uh, maybe, maybe. We have, there's so much going on with that, between that, I have a meeting with them set up Thursday so they can show me the film from the Leslie Street from the camera, but, uh, and I, excuse me, Deborah, but, and I, we'll get to this a little later, but there's a manhole right outside there. It's two pipes coming in from the courthouse and, and water is, is flowing, and I mean, commissioners, the water meter itself isn't spinning, so it's not use from in the courthouse. It's, it's stormwater, we're thinking, well, almost no, it's stormwater infiltrating the system, coming out there and then flooding the manhole right over there in the corner.
So, you're saying that, um, that you think the, the infiltration may be occurring on county property?
Yes. And until that level is low enough where I can get Dewberry to come and run a camera into the, the pipes and kind of tell me where that break is, I don't know for sure. We had it done years ago, Mark was looking for that, that, we, we had a CD somewhere of that, um, that film, I think, they, they found who the contractor that did that, and, you know, we're working with them, but that was years ago. We need an updated one, and, and that's what Dewberry did for the city over at Leslie Street. They ran, and that's, that's another mess, but they ran a, um, camera there to see where that stormwater is going, what's eroding, all the dirt from under Leslie Street.
I can tell you that the minimum project size is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and this, any corrections on the county property would be considered a separate project, and I don't think you'd be looking at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, although the city could make it part of their project.
Okay, well, then you and I and the city need to sit down and talk here really soon, see what we can do.
This, this just happened when it rained all the time.
No, since Hurricane Sally, and if you remember that, it was two weeks after that Sunday when it, it just rained and rained and rained, yes, that's, that's when it happened. I mean, commissioner, we're getting pumpouts two times a day, and the, the, the pump station's still flooded.
Well, the water table's still up, so...
Yeah.
Well, here's the other thing, it, you know, it's gotta be related to Hurricane Michael, and I don't know if we could make a case that the problem pre-existed Sally and it just didn't show up as much, uh, until then.
If we, if we can find where the, the sewer pipe is broken, yes, we can, maybe, but that won't be until we get the engineers to, to send a camera up there. That won't happen until the water stops flowing, so...
Right.
But, okay, uh, but, but I'll tell you what, Deborah, let's, let's, let's see if I can set up a meeting, um, with the city here, you, me, and the city, uh, later this week, okay? Depending on everybody's schedule.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, um, I guess we'll need a, a formal direction to pursue, uh, what, beach dune restoration? Is that what we're, we're thinking is the most appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, one other thought. Uh, Deborah, would boat ramp restoration qualify?
Uh, I thought that every, all of that was already funded with HMGP. Is that correct or not correct?
That I'll have to go verify with Pam.
What's that?
I have to verify with the question she's asking, so I have to verify that with Pam.
We'll have to verify that.
What boat ramp you referring to?
Well, I've heard that many of them are, um, in disrepair, uh, from the hurricane. I'm thinking, uh...
Yeah, most of them received FEMA obligation, which hasn't done the work yet.
I see.
They're being designed...
Now, are you talking about county boat ramps?
Yes.
They need one over there where the, them people doing that, uh, agriculture.
That, you mean Leonard's Landing? That is full of sediment.
But that's not a Hurricane Michael affected situation.
Okay, even if, even if it's loaded with sediment.
Can't put in a new boat ramp and call it, the original one was damaged by Hurricane Michael because it wasn't one that was stolen.
That's Hurricane Dax.
Yeah. But, you know, that thing, that water flow coming out the Cooda, it could've came from Michael, the, the water table ain't been up that high since, till now.
Yeah, I mean, it could, commissioner, until we get an engineer in there to tell us the amount of damage.
The water table, the water table ain't been there, we ain't got that much rain since.
I think it's stormwater system blowing up in there. I don't think it's courthouse pipe.
Right.
I was raising roads, it eroded and they had to shut the road down.
Yeah. Never know, did they, they got to run that?
Did they check it, yeah.
Did they take that egg break?
So, I guess Deborah's looking for a motion to, Deborah, you're looking for a motion to?
Uh, yeah, a motion to direct me on what you want me to, uh, start preparing for.
Dune restoration, what, what have we discussed?
That's a long list.
Well, you got, write it down.
Well, okay, so, Island View Park, it was my impression that, that is going to be FEMA-funded.
Yes.
Um, beach renourishment for Alligator Drive was one of those things where it's gonna be a huge deal, and you have to have some reasonable assurance it's gonna be maintained by the owners, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And, and so, that, that's not really, I mean, I don't know if you'd want to try that now, um, and then, so, dune restoration where you have public access, um, or, I don't know if we can do it, well, I guess if it's, if it, I don't know where the shoreline turns from public to private, so, that might be an issue on, um, um, you know, how far we would go with dune restoration, but the concept is, is eligible.
So, so I would make a motion, then, do we do one for dune restoration from Twelfth Street East to Twelfth Street West on St. George Island, because that was washed away in Hurricane Michael.
Okay. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Perry. I can, that, that's gonna be enough to get you started, or do we need to send in more than one, or?
Uh, St. George Island, Twelfth Street, and then, um, was, uh, there something that we needed to do on Alligator Point for dune restoration?
Yeah, that's relative to, um, beach access at Alligator Point.
Right, yeah, to public ex, I mean, is that...
Public access to those beaches, that's correct.
Okay, so, we're talking about things that are not FEMA-funded and not already funded, but would be, um, publicly owned, right?
And then the other one, that's right, the other one was, um, uh, beach nourishment relative to the rebuild of Alligator Drive.
Yeah.
We're already looking at architectural engineering that we're gonna be doing there.
Okay, alright. I can look at that, it didn't sound like it would be a real, uh, I mean, it was gonna be a huge project with, uh, a need for your maintenance, so, if that's, I don't want to spend time on something that isn't gonna fly with the property owners.
That's right.
Well, I know the property owners are gonna want that, uh, Alligator Drive road, excuse me, uh, protected, and I know they're looking at, um, MSBU funds and that type of thing long-term to maintain that beach nourishment protection for that drive. Uh, I, I, I think it's compatible to look at it.
The easiest thing I think...
Public safety.
Commissioner Bolt, I think the easiest thing would have to, if we, we could put it in a motion contingent and Deborah checking with Alan, you know, comparing those to see.
Yes, let's do that, good, yeah, let's load it up. I think while we're at it, we ought to do that.
Alright. Now, okay, and after the motion, then I have another question about it, okay?
So, I have three items in the motion, that's, uh, dune restoration, twelfth to twelfth on St. George Island. I have Alligator Point, dune restoration for public access, and then I have Alligator Point, beach...
Nourishment.
Beach, renourished.
Relative to Alligator Drive.
To protect the road.
Rebuild.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the, the only motion on the floor, unless it's in the first, the motion and the second is amended, is the Twelfth Street, the Twelfth Street, dune restoration. That is the motion on the floor.
Okay, well, do you amend them?
Yeah, I, I can amend our motion to include Commissioner Bolt's comments, but it's gonna be contingent on whether doable or not.
Right, you're saying the second.
Okay, the first and the second been amended to add, if it's acceptable. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Do that go along with your recommendation? What you recommend?
Well, I wasn't really making any specific recommendations, I was just seeking direction. Uh, now, I can tell you that it, we're, I'm going to need some kind of, um, oh, I don't know, feasibility check, and it doesn't have to be real elaborate, but something from an engineer, who's working on this at this stage?
You mean Alligator Drive?
Well, Alligator and, uh, anything, have you had anything related to dune restoration?
Nope.
Yeah.
I don't think we have, have we?
Yeah.
Yeah, Alan Pearce.
Yeah, Langston Construction, Langston himself is working on that.
Okay, all right, Deborah, with that, I, I bet we may have to the meeting maybe tomorrow, and I'll, I'll let you know who, who's running what project, all three projects.
Okay, because I will need to get, see if they can provide, you know, some professional information to support the application budget. Okay, uh, my second item, uh, which I do not have on your report, is, um, we have currently two homes in the flood plain, a hundred-year flood plain, one of which is completed under the CDBG mobile home replacement, and another one is in process. It is eligible for the county to pay the first year of flood insurance out of the CDBG grant, and we also have one more potential, uh, situation like this coming up. So, I wanted to see, um, if the board would like to, uh, authorize paying the first year of the homeowner's flood insurance with the CDBG, uh, grant. This is the East Point Fire CDBG, not the disaster recovery grant.
Please with the vote.
Is that moved, Sergeant?
Yeah.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass.
Okay, alright, and I have sent, uh, just for your information, I've sent another bid package to, um, advertising and to request more, um, more bids for mobile home replacement. We had Bonnie Langley's ready to go, but she, um, hesitated... We had Bonnie Langley's ready to go, but she, um, hesitated a little too long on whether she wanted to try to move to the property where she's currently living, which is next to the lot she owns. She didn't realize that she was on the wrong place. And since the, uh, Ironwood Homes bids came in, they've had many thousands of dollars of increase from the factories, and they can no longer absorb that. So hers is gonna be a rebid, um, as well as, um, Derrick Henry, and there's another one I'm working with, uh, and we'll get some generic bids that we could award if we have anybody else qualified come in. And, and when those bids come in, I'll bring it back to you for approval.
Okay. That's it? Got anything else?
And that's it. I, I can tell you that there's gonna be a CDBG COVID, uh, application cycle. I don't know what that's going to look like yet. Typically, CDBG and those kind of things don't go well together, so, uh, the state's sort of struggling with that right now, what they're gonna do. But I will bring that to you when it's available.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, okay, I was gonna tell, thank you, if you guys are finished.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Deborah.
All right, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, what, we're with?
Clerk, of course.
Next on the agenda will be the clerk of the court, Ms. Marsha Jones.
My item was just for information on the holidays for the clerk's office, just for information. Unless anybody has anything for me, that's all I had today.
Anybody got anything for me, Chuck?
I do. I just wanna wish her once again a belated birthday, ask her how it feels to be forty.
Feels good.
Keep up the good work. Next will be, um, coordinator, Mr. Michael Maroon. We done done Allen report.
Yep, say again, sir?
We done done Allen report.
Yeah, we did, we did this morning. We sure did.
Okay, well, next will be yours.
Okay.
Kind of coordinator.
As she quickly approaches the podium, uh, Ms. Courtney Bankston, your CCC chairperson would like to update the board on recent census events and changes to the official ending date, which actually didn't change at all.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, as you know, on Friday, September eighteenth, and Thursday, September twenty-fourth, um, with the help of Pat O'Connell, we held a barbecue census event in East Point and Landmark as a last effort. Um, I'm happy to inform you that we were able to collectively get fourteen to complete their census on site. Um, the number may not seem like a lot, but a census rep explained to me that each person represents a household of at least two people. So just double that number, and that's basically our count going up. I think both events were a success and delivered more than we expected. One of the MQAs also set up at the food pantry last week and was able to get another thirteen to complete their census. Um, a few weeks ago, a coworker told me a census numerator came to her door and told her that she didn't complete her census when she did months prior. Um, so I asked our census liaison whether this could be one of the reasons why our numbers are low. Um, according to the Census Coalition Group, some of the surveys were being kicked back for numerous reasons, reasons like an address not matching records, or a survey being completed without the, um, home ID that was sent by mail, and there, the list goes on. So I asked her if this could be a reason why our numbers were low. How does the homeowner or we as a county know if it's been kicked back? And even if it gets kicked back, does it still count the number of people they are claiming in their household? Unfortunately, I was unable to get verification on those concerns. On September twenty-fourth, we were at thirty-three point three percent self-response rate. Um, it's been a tough road, but despite COVID and our, and other setbacks, I do believe that we've done our best to spread the awareness about completing the census. Um, I do wanna thank the Counts Committee, um, Captain David Varne, who did, uh, barbecue at our both, at our first census event. Um, Rick Watson, Tracy Yoder, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Bolt, um, who showed up at both events, our census MQAs, Frank and Gwendolyn Engel, Jose Barbosa, and Bonnie Stubbs, who, um, assisted and went with me to business to business to drop off food to employers and employees and to spread the importance of completing their census. I also wanna day, um, thank David with Apalachicola Times, Michael Allen, Oyster Radio, for getting the information out to the public. Um, Ms. Sala Jackson and Evelyn Ramirez, who is our census liaison, provided those census MQAs at both of our events, so thank you for those. On October second, during litigation, Congress was forced to continue data collection via non-response follow-up and self-response until October thirty-first, which was the original deadline date. What that means for us is that there's still time to complete the census and get our numbers up. Um, we have spent all of our grant funds, so we will continue to get the word out via social media, website, PSAs. I also emailed, um, Ms. Lindy Studs. She's with the Atlanta Regional Office, um, requesting a census to try to get paper surveys mailed in our area, um, because this was the original plan when things first started. She turned, uh, forwarded my information to a Victor Cora, who has been assigned to our county as one of Florida's top priority areas. Um, he was kind and answered a lot of questions for me, and he also assured me that for the rest of the month, an MQA will be stationed at two different locations every week until the end of the, of the month. So that will hopefully help us get our numbers up. Um, today, they are stationed at the Gulfside IGA and Landmark Market. Um, thank you to Jeremy and Steve for allowing them to set up at their stores. These are two high-traffic areas that will be great places to start, since Carabelle and Lanark, Landmark are still our lowest response areas. Um, they also set up, are going to set up at every scheduled food pantry event for the rest of the month, once I confirm those locations and make sure the food pantry is okay with them setting up. Ms., uh, Mr. Cora also, um, sent me a link to the Census Mail Contact Strategies map that you, I sent, put on your desks for you. Um, this map shows the high and low broadband areas in our county. That light gray area that you see on there, um, is the area that should have been mailed paper questionnaires. Now, whether they were mailed out to them, I don't know, and Mr. Cora was not able to confirm that either. What I don't have is confirmation that these areas will receive a paper copy before October thirty-first. But what I do have is the resources that we are being given at this time, which is our door-to-door numerators and our MQAs. So if you have any suggestions, um, on great locations in any of your areas, just go ahead and forward them to me, and then I can get them to Victor to get our, uh, MQA assigned. I also want to thank you guys for entrusting, um, Pat O'Connell and I with this twenty-twenty census. We have a meeting scheduled with Rhonda Skipper next week, um, about ways to identify second homes and how to better position the county for the next census ten years from now. I think those, this contact strategies map sets a precedence on areas that still need assistance in getting better broadband internet. In conclusion, I just wanna say thank you, and that this has been a learning curve for me, and I'm glad to be able to assist in making sure that Franklin County counts.
Thank you all for the good job you done.
Yes, Courtney, um, so you're not sure if the paper applications actually were mailed?
No.
And, and the guy who would have ordered them isn't confirming as well?
No, he can't confirm. He doesn't have the resources to look that up. And no one in our areas are saying that they were sent paper copies, so I'm pretty sure they weren't sent out.
Another thought is, um, you know, another hotspot for taking census can be specifically on a Sunday afternoon from about eleven-thirty to three in the afternoon at St. James Bay Crooked River Grill, where many people come in there for lunch.
Okay.
And that may be a good traffic area for that spot.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
Okay, I'll give you contact if you need it.
Yes, I will need that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Courtney. Commissioners, before I move on to item two, I just got a notification on my phone. Um, Hurricane Delta is already a category four. Just turned to four. Um, a hundred and thirty, uh, a hundred and thirty miles per hour winds by eleven-twenty, Eastern time today. All right, um, let's go through number two. Hurricane, the sewer update, to give you my, this is the official report I have on it. Hurricane Sally and recent rainstorms have revealed leaks in the courthouse sewer system since Hurricane Sally, including today, ground stormwater has been infiltrating the courthouse sewer.